Welcome, everybody. Before we start our meeting, we will have a prayer by Councilman Kemna followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen. Welcome to the Monday, February 7th, 2022 City Council Meeting. This is also accessible online. The link is on the agenda at JeffersonCityMo.gov and the call-in information is also on the agenda. I will call this meeting to order, Mrs. Donaldson. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Hensley.
Present.
Kemna.
Here.
Lester.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Spencer.
Here.
Spicer.
Present.
Boat.
Here.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
I will entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, miscellaneous agenda items. We are happy to have our Cole County Health Department Director, Ms. Kristi Campbell, here with us tonight to give us a pandemic update. Welcome.
Oh, good evening. Thanks for allowing me to come and give a brief update. I'd love to entertain any questions, but I'll just go through a few points. I wanted to let you guys know that we still continue to meet weekly with our local healthcare organizations and the other counties that are in Region F. Here in the central region, there's 13 counties, mostly to discuss vaccine supply and make sure that we can redistribute if anyone needs some. And then we've been meeting every two weeks with the other healthcare organizations and the other elected officials and other city and county organizations, just to see how everything's operating in their departments and if there's anything that other departments can do to assist. So for the past few weeks, statewide in Cole County, COVID cases and hospitalizations are declining, as is the percent positivity. So as a reminder, the percent positivity is the number of positive tests versus the number of tests that are given. So I know a lot of people get confused if they hear 30% positivity in Cole County, think, oh, my goodness, you know, 30% of the population of Cole County has tested positive. And that's not what that means. It means that 30% of the tests that are being done, usually of symptomatic individuals, 30% of those are COVID-19. So testing was down last week because of the winter weather. So even though testing was down last week, the good news is that the percent positivity was also down. So less people are testing positive, even though they're symptomatic. There's still a lot of other respiratory viruses going on in the community, still seeing some flu. So all the organizations are still offering testing and vaccines in the doctor's offices. The COVID-19 vaccines are available at the Health Department on Thursdays, and there's still ample vaccine in the community. And we still have flu vaccine as well. You know, flu season, people usually think of that as the winter months, but flu season is actually October through March. So we still usually see influenza A in the beginning of the season, influenza B in the end of the season. So we've kind of seen that peak of A. We could still see some B later in the flu season. So the quarantine guidelines did change recently, so if you have any questions about that, the new guidelines are on our website, and there's a blue sheet that should be given out at the time of testing that kind of goes through what people need to do. So that way, when they get the results, they know what they need to do, whether they're positive or negative. But, you know, as always, we encourage people to stay home if they're sick, and then if they need medical attention, to contact their doctor. Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services will be hosting another free testing event this Sunday, the 13th, at the American Legion on Tanner Bridge Road. You do not need an appointment, so anytime between 10:00 and 6:00, you can get a free COVID-19 test. So like I said, I would love to answer any questions. I feel like sometimes virtually it's hard to have that dialogue, but evenings are busy sometimes for us, so it's easy for me to pop on online. But if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now.
Thank you for being here. Do we have any questions for Councilman Spencer?
Again, thanks for everything your department does on behalf of our community. Just was wondering if you know the status of quantities on hand for monoclonal antibodies here in Jefferson City or Cole County.
Yeah, I don't, usually on Wednesdays we go through it, but I know that recently they've kind of had to change their inventory because the monoclonal antibodies they had were not effective with the Omicron variants. They've had to change it to the other varieties. In the state, supply was limited. So the last I heard, our local hospitals were doing like between five to 10 a day, but some of it depended on supply. So I don't know what quantity they have on hand at this moment. I checked on hospitalizations today, but I didn't ask about monoclonal antibodies.
And I know those are topics, like you said, that are covered on a regular basis, too. So that's always helpful to be able to have that, that collaboration and coordination that you sided with our, all of our local health providers is extremely helpful. Other questions? And I know you always stress every time that, you know, if you're sick, stay home, and that doesn't only apply to COVID, that applies to basically everything. But that advice, I'm just thinking, what can we do as council members to get our word out in our words and what do you need from us? But getting those type of messages, testing, and where they can get their vaccine and that they can still get flu vaccine and those type of things.
Right. And it's always, you know, we always stress immune health, too, to take your vitamins and eat healthy and get exercise and drink your water and, you know, take care of yourself, get regular sleep, so reduce stress. So, you know, all those things that you could encourage as councilmen or as employers for your employees to take care of themselves, because then, you know, whether they encounter flu or the stomach virus that seems to be going around, you know, they have a better immune system and they're better equipped to deal with any of those issues.
Thank you. Councilman Lester?
So in the news, there's quite a bit about hospitals being stressed. So how are hospitals here doing?
So I checked on them today, and as of this morning, CAP region had 17 and SSM had 30 COVID patients. So, you know, there's a lot of other things that go into their strain, not just how many COVID patients, because they have patients from other, you know, viruses, other illnesses. They have a lot of staff shortages because, you know, they've lost staff over the last few years, you know. The pandemic hasn't been easy on anyone in the healthcare field, so I know they've lost staff, and then they have staff that are out sick. And then also, because the long-term care facilities are stressed, some patients might be ready to go to that next step, you know, down to a long-term care facility, but they can't, they don't have beds available. So the hospital has to keep those patients before they can go to that next step. So when you hear things about the hospitals being stressed, there's a lot of factors that play into that, not just COVID patients, but it adds to it.
Any other questions? Okay. We appreciate you being here, Ms. Campbell, and thank you for taking the time. Item five, public hearings. Have Bill 2021-79.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, finding that the area described as the Project Ten Pin redevelopment area is obliterate areas defined in Chapter 353 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, as amended, and that the redevelopment of such area is necessary and in the public interest, approving a redevelopment plan for such area, approving a grant of real property tax abatement, approving a development agreement, and providing further authority.
Mr. Mollman?
Thank you. So back in May 2019, a tornado hit Jefferson City. One of the properties that was significantly affected was the former Capitol Bowl facility, which essentially rendered that property unusable. The ordinance tonight sets forth a plan for redevelopment of that site and includes approval of a development plan, a development agreement, and approval of a partial tax abatement program for the project at 2017 Christie Drive. The project specifically consists of a multi-use entertainment center, includes bowling, video games, arcade games, and dining. The development agreement commits the owner of the project to hiring and maintaining 30 full-time jobs at the redevelopment area. The, sorry, the proposed tax abatement is for 75% of the real property taxes on improvements for a 10-year period, and then 50% of all real estate property taxes for a next ensuing 15-year period. This development plan, redevelopment agreement, and partial tax abatement is being presented under the provisions of Chapter 353 of the Missouri statutes. I believe that representatives from the project owner are here tonight, along with Missy Pono from the Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership. So I'd be happy to answer your questions, and I, those folks would be happy to entertain your questions as well.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Mollman before we open the public hearing? Seeing none at this time, we will open the public hearing portion, and would like to invite the applicant to come forward and give us an update. Welcome.
You might want to pull the mic up there.
Perfect. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Snyder. I am the attorney for the partnership who is partnership who's pursuing this project. It's DGV GB LLC. Our local business has formed a partnership and have come up with the concept that we're presenting tonight. I'm going to try to be as brief as possible. This project involves the redevelopment of 2017 Christie Drive. Again, it's a 20,000 approximate square foot facility. That's that former bowling alley. Again, was blighted by the tornado of 2019, collapsed roof, collapsed wall, exposed to the elements, infested with animals, rodents, raccoons. Graffiti had begun to show up. Homeless activity in the building. There was obvious drug activity at the time that this building was acquired in forehand. So all very visible to anyone traveling, Highway 54. The project will completely renovate the building to the tune of, I think, give you a more accurate figure, but multimillion dollar renovation. Well, it's the parking lot and the sidewalks associated with the tract. In the place of what is there now, they will operate a business called Striker's Grill. This is going to be a family entertainment and dining facility. It's a state-of-the-art bowling facility. This is not your parents' bowling alley. This is bowling alleys that have interactive features, you download apps, and you control part of the experience. So this is something that not only will adults enjoy, but certainly children who go in to partake will be, I think, impressed by the level of technology that's going to go into this project. Also, in addition to just the bowling, you're going to have all kinds of different gaming opportunities, air hockey, darts, pool, ping pong, football, or foosball, video games, the likes of which I would never attempt to even try, but they'll be there, and there'll be opportunities for younger people, perhaps, that understand how to use them. It's a place that kids will be able to go with their parents and enjoy the experience. Scott, again, will provide more detail on the concept. I think he'll have some visual aids to show and get through the technology on that. The benefits to the city and the community here, as stated, we're removing blight in this project, we're enhancing the quality of life in Jefferson City for its citizens, we're keeping dollars here over the course of several years now that there has not been an entertainment facility. People are migrating. Those are going for bowling, for instance, they're going to California, and those dollars will begin to stay here once this project is up and running. Again, we mentioned creating jobs. There's a commitment by the developer that will last throughout the life of this 25-year development plan to keep and maintain permanent jobs. I wanted to also point out, too, that this project has the added advantage of having experienced partners who will be heading it up. The principals of the company, well-known to the Jefferson City business community, that Scott Drinkard, who has extensive experience in restaurant business, Brian Harrison, Mark Gerlock, Brian Blumer, all very familiar to the city community. So I think this is an opportunity for the city to assist local, experienced business people and be assured that with that, you're lasting success. This project's going to also involve an extensive community outreach, and I think that's why it's garnered support in the school districts who are primarily affected by the property tax abatement. There is plans in place to involve the Jefferson City Public Schools, Halius as well, putting bowling into their physical education programs. Some part of the curriculum, we hope. Also, plans for teacher appreciation days, bowling leagues. There's going to be probably at the outset, very extensive advertising, advertising not only in the business, but also Jefferson City as a destination, because this does have the potential to bring people into Jefferson City who might not otherwise. You're going to see that this project will also help supplement other projects that the city has invested in. One that comes to mind is one that I'm very experienced with, which is the ball fields out at River Bottoms. Family travels with baseball and softball extensively. Know what keeps teams coming back to communities? It's the experience that they have there. If they have somewhere to go to hang out during rain delays overnight, during phase in action between games, that enhances that experience, and that makes those families want to come back, and that makes them tell their coaches, we need to go back to that tournament. You're going to see that a project like this will supplement all of those things, just softball and baseball, but basketball and bowling. Finally, I haven't even mentioned the sales tax element. It's funny that that's not even been mentioned, but there's going to be a tremendous sales tax advantage to this project. Seen details in, in, details that have been circulated on. Again, so finally, this project presents yet another opportunity. I wanted to mention, this group, part of it, has acquired the 20 acres that's adjacent to 2017 Christie Drive. It's undeveloped. Open up an opportunity and will be looked at as perhaps integrating an overall development in not only this tract, but that other 20 acres, and those are plans that are in the works. But it does provide that opportunity. In closing, you know, utilization of a Chapter 353, I view as a tool. It's kind of like a hammer. The primary purpose of a hammer is to hammer a nail to a wall. Primary purpose of Chapter 353 is to remove blight, but like a hammer, you can turn it around, you can dig a hole, you can crush a wall, as other things that you can do. Same with Chapter 353, it has other tools to help you achieve other things that you're wanting, not just removing. Talked about those. Increasing sales tax, enhancing quality of life, creating jobs, attracting development and redevelopment, supplementing other projects and investment for the city is undertaken. So with that, I can yield my time, and Scott Drinkard is here to make a few comments. I think we do have some visual aids that we can share with you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Welcome.
I'm Scott Drinkard, one of the four owners of the Striker Project. I don't know, I didn't really put a presentation together other than a little PowerPoint that we have with some pictures of the facility. When we purchased it back in January, it was overwhelmingly disaster, to be honest. And I know that the question about this abatement tax thing was, you do it now, once we're probably three weeks of opening, but we started this project, economic development, I think the chamber helped us too, back in like, I don't remember exactly, maybe probably back in April or May, we met with you guys, took our time to try to get this process going. And it just isn't, it's just like everything else, it's a process, it takes time, but kept going and continued to try to get the thing underway, and now we're probably going to open by the end of the month or two. But I know that Tom had mentioned, we spent about, about $6.2 million by the time we opened the front doors, and we should generate annually a little over $4 million of money. A lot of those numbers were put together by consultants throughout the United States that's helped us with media and those places that do this for a living, just estimated numbers. So I think we'll bring a lot of sales tax revenue. If I could say, I mean, I just left there a minute ago, we had a meeting at 5:00, but for our community, this thing is, I don't feel like it's a home run. I think we actually knocked it in the ballpark. It is just a state-of-the-art facility. We had an orientation last weekend with a little over 70 employees. Most of those, I would say probably 50 of those were young kids, some of them mostly in high school. Great first job, it's going to be a fun, entertaining, energetic atmosphere for them to work, so we're excited about that. We'll hire quite a few full-time employees, but most of them I feel like are going to be part-time, a lot of the younger kids and stuff like that, that are very excited about working in the facility. So we're excited to have it in this community and answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. Thank you. So we appreciate that information from the applicant, and is there anyone else here that would like to speak? We do have Mr. Morrissey signed up as well, so welcome.
My name is Dennis Morrissey, Assistant of the Fourth Ward. Lived in Jefferson City since 1977. Retired from State of Missouri, have 30 years of service with Department of Revenue, Taxation, and Department of Economic Development. Think this is a great project. Question, Scott said, coming to you at the end of the project, it's almost completion, and asking for a tax abatement. Purpose of tax abatement is to incentivize a project to happen. This one is already happening. So just don't see the point in, in the tax abatement. Seen a lot of talk about the potential benefits, but I'm privy to any analysis, maybe you guys have. There is some, I wouldn't mind seeing it. This thing is already built. If you say yes to these people now, everybody will come to you at the end of the project. How will you ever be able to say no to anybody? Come to you with a project that's done. It's more like, instead of you incentivizing the project, you're almost like giving a kickback. Project is done. Project will happen when you this money could be used for a lot of other things, a lot of projects. Every one of you has a project, I believe, that you'd like to see happen. I know a lot of people want infrastructure, they want streets, they want stormwater. This money that giving away, project that already is going to happen, could be used for that. Begs to discuss a bigger problem. Just the tax base itself, property tax. Have this county commercial property in the city that's woefully underpraised, undervalued. I know you can't do anything about it, that's a necessary issue, but I can show you, done a lot of analysis, I can show you, properties sit side by side. Either one of them be valued at what they sold for, but one might be way down here and the other one's if you were to work with the assessor, might be able to bring in more revenue. At least it would be more equitable. Right now, the residential people within the city are bearing a lot more of the tax burden than they should because commercial property is undervalued. Anyway, I guess I would encourage you to look at that, talk to the assessor, beat up on the assessor. He's not doing a very good job in my book. Other than that, I would ask that you approve the tax abatement for this project.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on Bill 2021-79? Welcome.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes. And we just need your name for the record.
Ed Williams. I know some of you are really glad to see me. I'm sure after I leave, you'll be glad of that, too. There's no need for this tax abatement. If it's going to be as successful as they say it is, and I suspect it will be, they're going to make lots and lots of money. So this abatement is just more money, more profit for them. And you've already heard some of the projects that could be going ahead. I remember a few years ago, there was a question in the council whether to buy a snowplow or a police car. What, what, try this on just for, you know, just for laughs. How about everybody pay their own share, their fair share, and then maybe we could buy a police car and a snowplow? Did you hear about the city boy that went out, moved to a small town, raised in a big city? And he went to, got a job in a small town, and he kept hearing the guys talk about hunting this and fishing that, car racing and everything else. So he decided to go hunting. He'd never been before. So he bought a gun and a camouflage vest, an orange hat, got a dog, already had a pickup truck. So he got permission to hunt on some property. And so one Saturday morning, pretty early, he went out, parked his truck, went out across the road, well, there may be something over there I could shoot. So he went over there, didn't see anything, so he turned around, went over there. So he turned around, went over there, nothing there. Went a few more steps forward. He said, well, I better go back to the truck. So he turned around, then he realizes, he has no idea where he's going. He is absolutely and totally lost. He walked all day, whole day, looking for something to shoot, or actually is more interested in finding his truck by this time. Then it started to get cool and dark. So he sat down against the tree and started a fire. But he was really hungry. But he had nothing to eat. And then he looked over at this little dog. Dog had a really big bushy tail. So he reached over and cut it off, cleaned it up, ate the meat off. You know, so he was feeling pretty good. But he looked over at the dog. Dog's head was falling, was, you know, laying down, his ears were down. The dog had walked every step that the hunter had walked, but he hadn't had anything to eat. The hunter looked around, there was the tailbone. Put nothing on it, but you know, some bone and gristle. So he said, oh heck, go and take it, you're lucky to get it. That's a lot like a Chamber of Commerce, who I'm sure is behind this project. There are, again, behind everything else, I think it was even mentioned. I'll get back to that a little later. Well, the fact is, tax abatement is supposed to be used to attract industry, isn't it? This is already here. I drive by virtually every day. So it's going, so businesses we already have shouldn't be eligible for it. And in this one, especially if it's going to be successful, they ought to pay their fair share of property taxes. What I heard, what I've read, that it was going to be a 10-year abatement. Now I get the copy of the bill today, I find out there's 15 more years at 50%. I don't believe the community has been told about this. I think this has been kept under wraps. And that would not be unusual around here. Matter of fact, it's coming to be normal. We've got a Chamber of Commerce editor at the News Tribune, so everything's favorable to the chamber. Under redevelopment objectives, while the availability of jobs was a determining factor 30 years ago, today, quality of life is the determining factor for where potential workers choose to locate. The availability of workers is the number one factor that businesses use when choosing a locale and a community. Quality of life is not just how low crime rates and good schools, although those are important. Quality of life is about those things that make people feel good living in a place. Doesn't that make you just, you know, feel warm and cozy, kind of like you pick up a kitten or something? An entertainment district is going to draw people to live in Jeff City? I find that really, really hard to believe. They're going to come here because we have a bowling alley and a retirement, entertainment center? That's pretty far-fetched, as far as I'm concerned.
Appreciate it, and I know we're getting close to the five minutes.
Okay, I'll just continue then.
I think we've gone past it. So if you'd like to wrap up, thank you.
History of the Jefferson City Chamber, primary centers around three bills. Transformation tax, county zoning, and the use tax, trying to save the, after mall. All three of them were defeated. Is it possible that the Chamber of Commerce is out of touch with the citizens of Jefferson City? I think so. I think they only associate with each other. Started with the story about a dog and a hunter. The dog represents the people of Jefferson City. Hunter represents the Chamber of Commerce. We're not going to get our tail cut off, but we're having, we're giving up something. We're paying our taxes. The Jefferson City Chamber of Commerce doesn't want any business to pay their fair share. Do not fall for this attempt to, this outrageous attempt to just set another 25 years of abatement. I didn't see anything. In that time, is there going to be a strip joint come in there? I didn't see anything about avoiding a strip joint or anything else. Are the values of this community a very family-oriented community? Going to be, always be served? Are these five guys that like to have a good time or know how to have a good time? And in another month, are they going to bring in a strip joint? Well, I doubt it. But the fact is, they could. And there's no, nothing at all to keep them from that. Do not fall for this idea of reducing the time and the amount of abatement. This is a horrible bill, unfair, and should not be imposed on the people of Jefferson City. Have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Spencer?
I'm just confused how we went from a bowling alley to a strip club.
Well, it's, it's a district, it's an entertainment district. There's going to be other things out there, are there not? Have I made a mistake?
I don't, the city of Jefferson is going to approve a strip club.
Well, can they keep it from it? A few years ago, when the county was, the Chamber was trying to zone the county, Mark White, the lawyer for, for the county, and he wrote the bill, the zoning bill, he said that you cannot keep strip joints out of Cole County. He's in Kansas City, Kansas, and I think he knows quite a bit about zoning, since he's zoned some of the biggest cities in the country.
This is a recreational center, not a, not a strip club. And I don't think they're going to go from a bowling alley to a strip club.
What, what, where's it say that? Where's, what laws is, and what law does it says that? And that was just an example. There could be a lot of things that's not approved by the community as a whole.
I think you've answered the question, so thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on Bill 202179? With that, we will close the public hearing portion and take up the bill. Is there any council discussion or deliberation on the bill? Councilman Lester?
I just, I just wanted to say that I'm, I'm not going to be voting to approve this project for tax abatement. Action is not to be interpreted to be against the development taking place. I'm very pleased to see it. I think it'll be very successful. At the same time, I don't see that it is appropriate receiving tax abatement benefits. I support economic development efforts and I support the use of tax abatement in certain circumstances to advance economic development goals. However, I do not see that this project of an entertainment venue on Christie Drive is appropriate with these incentives. What I've read about tax abatement and economic development is that most of them are not successful. Those studies conclude that the abatement incentives could be successful in spurring development, but most of the time they're not because of the manner in which they're implemented. Tax abatement efforts that have been successful had goals of attracting businesses to an area that otherwise would be located elsewhere. Or they were designed to attract businesses to a struggling part of the city to meet certain services that were needed or to provide much better paying jobs to revitalize the area. I really don't see that this project is fitting into achieving any of those type of goals. Again, I'm not saying or implying anything negative about this venture. Think the business is going to happen regardless of the tax abatement benefits, and I think it's going to be successful. That's great. Looking at the information that we have been provided about it, you can go out to Christie Drive and see how the renovation on the property has almost been completed. Obviously, the business is not going anywhere else to be located elsewhere. Look at the return on investment numbers and even a low performance estimate projected at close to $150,000 per year, low estimate. In my understanding of the total 353 tax abatement benefit over the 25-year period would be about $118,500, or an average of about $475 per year over that time period. Are we really to believe that this small amount of additional incentive is of material consideration in decision-making about this business startup? If the incentive is really not needed, why would we do it? For evaluating economic issues, I want the components of decision-making as simple and clear as possible. Show me how the project fits with meeting specific economic goals trying to be achieved by these tax abatement incentives. If it checks out against those goals, I'll be all for it. I'm not convinced this project is appropriate.
Thank you, Councilman Lester. Is there any other comments or deliberation or questions? Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I was just going to comment on, this, this is the third project similar to this since I've been on council. The discussion has been basically the same. The other two worked in advance of the project, one being the mall project, which distressed area that, you know, we had a local company that was willing to come in and invest in a project that probably no one else in the country would have invested in. Part of what made that successful was we were able to jumpstart it with some, some opportunities. Even with that, it's been a struggle. Kind of projects are tough, especially in this marketplace. Second one was the project on the old St. Mary's. Again, I mean, a lot of discussion upfront. You know, very good discussion. Why do this for some of the investors that were involved? And, you know, it's a valid point. If you have a crystal ball that, that works, that enables you to say, yeah, there's someone standing right around the corner that would come in and do this without the incentives. But as we look backward on that, there weren't people. And even with, as amazing as that project is, I mean, there's still opportunities there. So I mean, the jump start has helped to get us to this point. And I think as, as we listen, there, I mean, there's a lot of factors in this city. This city did not grow for the last 10 years. Part of what young people tell us is they want things to do in this community. A lot of partners that, that meet on these issues, I mean, none of them are here tonight speaking against the proposal. I mean, they took their opportunity during the committee process. And the schools are always something that we look at very closely when we're looking at these kind of projects because they have the largest impact. But they also look at it as an opportunity to invest in the community, which they have done on this project and the other projects. So, I mean, I know in the best of all worlds, we would not like to do these kind of things. But if we're going to jumpstart opportunities in this community and create and leverage dollars, sometimes we have to make the tough decisions when we all come together and might the unanimous decision to push it forward to this point. So I mean, I understand the frustrations, but sometimes we've got to leverage the tools that we have at, at our disposal to be able to do some creative things for this community. There's a lot of other proposed developments in that corridor. I mean, obviously, we've got the auto dealerships which have rebuilt, they've invested a lot of money there. Special Olympics is back, there are some other potential opportunities in that corridor. And if we can invest to jumpstart some projects that helps us complete that project, I think that's what we try to do. I mean, there has been a lot of discussion, Ryan has spent a lot of time on this. So I support the project. I think we have to look at these things one at a time, which we try to do, but this one seems like it, it checks the boxes for me and makes sense for our communities. So I support the project.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. Any other questions? Councilman Spencer?
Just to kind of piggyback off of Councilman Fitzwater, you know, if this would be Ford or GM coming in to build a plant, we'd be rolling out the red carpet for them and then our cells backwards to try to get that plant here. This is local talent, people that have, have roots in our community that are not going to pick up and go away tomorrow. And I think it's time that we put a little bit of extra effort and investment in our local talent. So I appreciate you all doing that. I think it's going to be a shot in the arm of the community. I hope that we can get rid of the blight across the highway with Truman Hotel and really make that, that area prosper. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Spencer. Any other discussion? Councilman Wiseman?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Just, just as a reminder, Mr. Moulman, I have, so the sales tax is different than the property tax. Property tax doesn't fund, like our sales tax, any of our sales tax H or any of that stuff, right?
Correct. So the sales tax, or sorry, the property tax is a fairly low component. It's not a very large component of our budget. Margie could probably get a better guess than I could, but no, the, like the capital improvement sales tax and the, you know, the new public safety sales tax and the park sales tax, and even the city's general sales tax, those are separate funds that, that fund separate things. Generally, what property tax would go into, the property that tax that's raised by the city goes into generally two places, just general revenue and then a very small portion goes in to help on fireman pension.
So, and if you'll remind me, did the superintendent was here a couple of weeks ago, correct, of the schools? And he didn't speak against it or for it, did he?
Correct.
Okay. And then there was a mention of, just, just to tie up a loose end real quick, there was a mention of a strip club potentially it turning into a strip club. It can't do that because of the development agreement, correct?
The development agreement would prevent this from turning into a strip club. At least the, the opportunity for the tax abatement would disappear.
That was going to be my next question. Thank you.
Any other questions or discussion? And if it is a five-five, I will be voting in favor, just to let council know what my intention would be, depending on the outcome that, and, you know, if not for the tornado, we, we wouldn't even be having this discussion, there would still likely be a viable business there. I know after the tornado, it's one of the places I probably had the most or close to it comments about people's desire to see that come back. And it's clearly not something that simply insurance proceeds could rebuild both the building and the business. And for whatever reason, we're very fortunate that we had a group of, of business individuals and the community, local developers that wanted to see that happen. So for many of those reasons, again, it's hard to believe sometimes as we look at the community that the tornado kind of brought us to where we are now. But having the tools available for those incentives is extremely helpful and fortunate that we have those available. And the timing, I know was mentioned a couple of times, that the developers have talked with different entities and, and working through the Chamber of Commerce and our Jefferson City Regional Economic Partnership, as we do have representatives here from that organization as well tonight. And that is where the school district was that, that did voice their support also at that, where we get our city and county. And we also have our county representative here this evening as well. But city, county and school district officials to talk about, and thankfully, we're, we're in favor. So typically, if, if it doesn't go through that process, then, then it usually won't fare very well here at the, at this level. So we sure appreciate all those entities working together. So with that, seeing no other comments. So, with that, seeing no other comments, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
No.
Schreiber?
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Boat?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Bill passes. Item six, appointments by the mayor. We have none this evening. Item seven, we have no presentations. Item eight, announcements. We have our four standing committees at JeffersonCityMo.gov. Are there, we'll go through our four standing committees. Any report from administration?
Our meeting on Wednesday has been, or I guess, yeah, it was Wednesday has been canceled. We have appointments to bring to council next time.
Thank you. Anything from finance?
No announcements tonight. Thank you.
Public safety?
Yes, ma'am. Public safety will meet on February 24th, 7:30 in the police training room.
Okay. Thank you. And public works and planning?
Public works will meet this Thursday at 7:30. I've not seen the agenda yet, but I'm sure we have a number of things to talk about. Invite you all to join us if you have nothing better to do.
Thank you. I have a few announcements this evening. Today, the USDA Secretary Thomas Vilsack was at Lincoln University to support climate smart commodities and agriculture opportunities. And we were very pleased that he made his announcements and kicked that off at Lincoln University. Speaking of Lincoln University, I also want to congratulate the new president who had been interim, Lincoln University President John Mosley. I know he's been before the podium and spoken to this group before, and we sure appreciate his collaboration with the city and are glad that Lincoln University has chosen their president and glad to see that it's President Mosley. Also, I want to take an opportunity to thank all of our city for their hard work on the snow removal with the recent snowstorm and snow event from every department, from, of course, police and fire response and our public works. And we had, I know that I received several and I believe council did as well, but several comments and compliments for our public work staff and the method that they were able to get the snow removed for such a volume of snow and having it coming in waves and temperature and all the factors that affected the storm, that we sure appreciate their hard work. I know it was a long, a couple of days or more and certainly couldn't have done it without all of our departments working together and probably missed some thank yous there, but please pass along our thanks to the respective departments and really to all of our city staff for stepping up at times that are difficult. Every department had tasks that had to be done and were difficult during that time. So, Mr. Marash, anything to add as far as public works too? Or? Okay. We appreciate it. And I know, of course, police and fire and even parks out there, every department had tasks to do. Councilman Kimna?
And I know you mentioned this to us in an email, but also you had mentioned that with what we received, there was minimal as far as repairs. I mean, we came through fortunate or how was that?
Yeah, that was one of our worries with the age of our equipment, that, you know, we typically will have downtime on equipment. And we have minor issues, but we didn't have any major issues. So, thankful for that.
All right. Thanks to everybody for their work during that. Item nine, our Lincoln University representative is not here this evening. Item 10, we have no, no one signed up for presentations. Want to make sure we didn't miss anyone. Okay. Item 11, consent agenda, and we're going to take this up separately. Is there a motion to take up A through C?
So moved. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So, consent agenda, is there a motion to take up D?
So moved.
Any further discussion? Councilman Fitzwater?
I just wanted to point out on this, sometimes these things get buried on the consent agenda. This is a very positive thing for our city. We received a grant from Missouri Department of Natural Resources. We had to match the grant was for almost $125,000, and I think it's just a testament to the work that our staff does and the relationships that we have. This has enabled us to essentially double that project and just didn't want to see it get lost in the consent agenda. Agenda, I'm in full support of it and just want to say thanks for the work that go in to finding appropriate dollars for us to spread our dollars and again, leverage dollars that we have in this city.
Thank you, Councilman Fitzwater. Any further discussion? Councilman Spencer?
Yeah, you know, when I first got elected, this was an area that had a lot of concern with storm water issues and it's glad that this is finally coming off the board and coming to fruition. But just a quick question, with this type of construction, you know, those secondary streets are just really bad shape. Are we going to try to address that possibly sooner than later?
You know, you mean the particular street that this is on?
Especially on Bolton.
Mainly Douglas. It's mainly in Douglas. The pipe is actually going out in the street, so be pretty significant street repair as part of this. It's just easier, quite frankly, than to try to navigate however many backyards with all the various things going on back there to do this and move this water around the houses and down. We do have to do street repair, but on the other hand, they need some attention anyway.
Yeah, especially the Bolton area and Wayne and Douglas that is, when I walked through there, it was in some need of some major upgrades. So, hopefully, we can really encompass that in a whole total repair for that whole project. So, thank you.
So, item D, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll go on to bills introduced, but I also did want to thank during my thankful for the snow storm that we had also employees in airport and parking and bus drivers and transit and all of those areas. So, every department was all hands on deck. So, I know I'm also forgetting others, but sure appreciate everybody. Item 12, bills introduced, number 80.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with MoDOT for public transit operating assistance.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. The, yes, did you read the right one? Your operating assistance? I'm sorry.
Both titles are the same.
Okay. Sorry about that. But basically, okay, number 80, a grant for $123,540 administered through MoDOT for the purchase of two high roof paratransit buses. It's 100% money, meaning that the grant will pay for the buses in total with no match. Be happy to answer any questions. We had tried to get these earlier, but some price changing affected the grant, so we had to redo the paperwork.
Any discussion questions? Okay. 2021-81.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with MoDOT for public transit operating assistance.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Now, this one is a smaller grant, $11,018, but it is targeted at our operating operation of transit and just helped defer some of our costs there.
Any questions? Discussion, 2021-82.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri adding an ordinance to address financial responsibility of removal of disabled aircraft.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, this would kind of codify what goes on when we have a disabled aircraft on the airfield at the airport, and we'd be removing it if it's not removed in a reasonable amount of time or if it were causing some issues. And it would make the owner of that vehicle responsible.
Any questions? 2021-83.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule J Parking Prohibited by modifications on Riviera Street and Oscar Drive and Schedule M Parking Prohibited at certain times by the addition of part of Mulberry Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This is actually three different locations. They were all discussed at the Traffic and Transportation Commission and recommended for approval just for convenience, combined them into one bill, but they came from three different citizens or groups of citizens. One, Riviera Street, basically that removes parking on one side and puts it back on the other. So, it's just switching sides of the street where parking is allowed. Now, it will be more near some apartments in the area. Oscar Drive, this was just to help with the site distance issue that was brought forward by some folks that work in the area. And then on Mulberry Street, again, a couple of businesses in that area would like to seeing some parking removed so they can navigate it with larger trucks in the area.
Any questions? Yes, Councilman Fitzwater?
Just one question. As these things go through, and I should remember this from my days on transportation, but public safety weighs in on these, just to make sure that doesn't?
Yeah, there's a, there's a police officer that is part of the commission or the staff part of it.
Thank you. 2021-84.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic Schedule I J O R N S by modifications to parking in the 100 block of Bolivar Street and area in front of 700 West Main Street.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. This one, since it's a little more extensive, we broke it out on its own, but basically someone had requested, owner of a salon in the area requested that a four-way stop at Main and Bolivar. We did a small traffic study, a quick traffic study and looked at that and found that not to be a good solution. However, the main issue was site distance and seeing around delivery trucks for a local restaurant bar. And so, through that process, though, the commission did quite a bit of work here and has kind of sketched out on this sketch. So, it does several things. It creates a new loading zone, highlighted in green, prohibits parking a little more extensively throughout the area, so it reaffirms that in our code. And that goes all the way down to the little bulb there at the Centennial Park. No, Rotary Park, sorry. And then also modifies how parking is actually striped on the street, changing some angle parking to parallel and vice versa on the other side. So, you can kind of see what it does on the screen. Everyone in the area that was contacted has been supportive of this. Capitol Police are located here as well, so there's a couple of spots reserved for those folks. Person that did request the four-way stop really wasn't satisfied with this approach, but this is what came from a recommendation, transportation, traffic.
Thank you. Any questions? 2021-85.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing a sanitary sewer easement on the property addressed as 2937 Hillview Drive in the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Pretty straightforward ordinance, basically vacating a sanitary sewer easement. The line's been relocated in the past, and so this would allow the, clean up the property and allow the owner to do some additional construction on it.
Any questions? All right. Item 13, bills pending, 2021-77.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the supplement agreement between the city of Jefferson and the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission extending the project time for the airfield lighting repairs project.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. As Clerk indicated, just extends the time on our airfield lighting project. Airfield lighting was affected by the flood in 2019. We were able to get a grant to help us replace that and repair it. The timeframe on the grant had expired, so to get all our money, we have to re-up the grant agreement to include some additional time.
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Lester?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Aye.
Boat?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Weisman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. Nothing on the informal. Item 15, Resolutions 2021-26.
A resolution posing a question to the Parks and Recreation Commission regarding merit pay increases for employees.
Mr. Moleman?
Thank you. Clerk basically said it all, pretty simple resolution that poses a question to the Parks and Recreation Commission regarding merit pay increases. Question is set forth in full in the resolution, and the resolution also provides requests that a response to the question be provided by the Parks and Recreation Commission within 45 days. Forty-five days was specifically chosen to give the Parks and Recreation two meetings to undertake the question before a response is due.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Aye.
There's a motion. Is there a second? So, we'll take up Resolution 2021-26. Any council discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Kimna?
No.
Lester?
No.
Schreiber?
Spencer?
Aye.
Spicer?
Boat?
No.
Ward?
No.
Weisman?
No.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
We have a tie, five ayes, five noes.
Okay, and I'll make the deciding vote. I will be voting no on that, so resolution fails. And I guess I should have also said we have Chairman Chris Lickle here, so appreciate you being here from the Parks and Rec Commission as well. Item 16, presentations from the gallery on other topics. We have nobody signed up this evening. Item 17, any council and staff discussion on presentation topics? Item 18, new business. We have two items. Item A, let's get out our calendars to determine our work session for our ARPA funds discussion. We had previously posed several. We typically do these on a Monday, so we had looked at some Monday dates. So, I don't know if council would prefer to do something like a, into March a little bit. We had mostly February unless we chose like a different night of the week, like a Tuesday the 22nd or March 1st, which are Tuesdays. Any type of discussion here? Councilman Fitzwater?
Would there be any interest in trying to tag it on to the backside of a future council meeting? Can't come up with a date that works for everybody. I know it's a commitment.
Hensley, I know.
I wonder, or if we're going to have, I'm sorry to cut you off. I just wanted to add on to the, suggest maybe a slight change. Since we're going to be inviting public comment and input, maybe at the beginning of the meeting, just to allow folks to speak and leave if they'd like to.
We could just have a little bit longer council meeting. It's up to council, if you wanted to do that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
My sense is that we're going to have more than one of these opportunities. So, if the first one is during a council meeting, and even if it's sort of naturally shortened as a result of having other business set behind it, there will be another opportunity as well.
Okay. Councilman, Councilman Weisman?
Yeah, I was going to suggest the same thing. If our information, you know, could be shortened a little bit, maybe that would be worthwhile having it at the beginning or end, whichever one, it makes no difference to me, of a council meeting and just, and present it for the first time because I think it is important to have that public input.
Okay. So, we could look at potentially February 21st is the next meeting, March 7th is the next, so I'd be kind of looking at Mr. Kroll and Ms. Miller to see their thoughts since they would likely be presenting some of the information. Is there preference on timing?
Before March 19th, I think. I think it's really the expectation, if the expectation is that we have the public input meeting where different people can come in and provide some of their comments for council consideration, then we certainly can do that. And then, as Councilman Hensley mentioned, there's probably a few other meetings to come after that as well that may take a little bit more.
Okay. So, it sounds like we'll put it on, it'll be ready by the next council meeting, the February 21st?
Yeah, we can. I want to make sure we have sufficient time to get notice out and let people, which we should if we do it the next.
To begin the discussion, and we'll have several, and that might be a good format to have it at every other council meeting, have that discussion or however we'd want to do that. Okay. Thank you for February 21st. Unless anything changes, then please let us know before the agenda goes out. So, this is a tentative agenda, not a final, so everybody check your agenda in case there's changes. All right. Item B, Capitol Avenue update. Mr. Sanders?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Saw me over there yawnin', so I'm eager to be done with this, so it won't be as long as I may have had people to be. About six years ago, the city council, working with the Housing Authority commissioned a blight study. The blight study is also known as qualifications for Chapter 99 designation, which is a reference to state statutes regarding urban renewal that cities can pursue. The purpose of this blight study was to establish that the area is blighted or have unsanitary conditions. or have unsanitary conditions. Um, the study area basically was Adams to Lafayette, and then from State Street south to, uh, basically High Street and some buildings to the south of, uh, High Street. And the study did find that, uh, many, uh, aspects of blight listed here, uh, adequate, inadequate street layout, unsanitary, unsafe conditions, deterioration of site improvements, most of those being, uh, the structures in the area, uh, improper subdivision, uh, or obsolete plating, which, uh, can impact what sort of development can occur, uh, if any is to occur there. Um, existence of conditions which endanger life or property by fire or, uh, other causes. So basically, that established that there is a concern there and is blighted. After that, uh, another planning activity was done. Um, actually, it probably ran almost simultaneously, but it was done later. It was the urban renewal plan. So first, uh, the city and Housing Authority, which also acts as the Land Clearance Redevelopment Authority, I'll probably use those interchangeably, uh, basically had a plan put together, uh, to set forth, how are we gonna address this blight? Um, it was approved by the city council. Sorry, I have a typo up there. It wasn't a city-county approved, I believe that the typo should be city council. But it was approved about six years ago. Uh, two of the major activities in that, um, were basically to, uh, possibly acquire property, but first go through and see what the specifics of each property are in terms of the conditions that contribute to blight. So, um, inside the orange area here, uh, that's outlined, uh, the city, uh, property and housing inspectors, along with the Housing Authority staff, went to every individual property using the Property Maintenance Code to identify what the deficiencies are with each structure. And with that, the, uh, Housing Authority was able to, uh, along with the city, contact each of the property owners and see what they're gonna do about these issues. At the same time, uh, out here, foyer, there was a, uh, an, uh, open house activity where the Housing Authority and the Planning Department, uh, had, uh, information about each structure, a picture of them, a little bit of history about it, and actually invited the public to come in and say, which one should we focus on first? Let's choose here, but we want to sort of prioritize which, which areas we work in. Uh, five houses, excuse me, five structures, five properties were identified. Uh, not quite all five of those were the ones that the, uh, acquisition process occurred in. But, um, they're up there in green. Basically, it's the, uh, along the 100 block, 101, 103, which is this Dandish House, the Keyhole House that a lot of people really admire. And then the Parsons House at 105, along with 504 State Street, which is a, a vacant lot. So that was thinking that can complement some of the redevelopment activities possible with some of those adjoining properties. The, uh, properties in, with the little blue asterisk are ones that, uh, did receive the issues with the property that had the deficiencies, and they corrected the deficiencies. So all those in, in blue, the seven of them, the property owners were responsible, addressed the issues, and did not have any issues or concern about being acquired by the, uh, CRA. Um, and that, uh, that kind of left everywhere else in there, uh, with some concerns. There was also simultaneously going on at this time, a couple of efforts by the, uh, Public Works and, and, and Planning Departments to address some of the other issues. Uh, one thing, uh, the city did was create, to do, well, rezoned the base zoning of the Capitol Avenue area, which basically was to help, uh, maintain the current land uses or land uses that, uh, the Planning and Zoning City Council felt were appropriate in the area, such as the multifamily, up to four residents, single-family, loft apartments above commercial areas, things like that. The other district... The, uh, the other zoning action was basically an overlay district, or what you might call floating district. Uh, that was put in place specifically for the Capitol Avenue area, uh, due to helping try to, uh, maintain and keep the existing architectural charm and design, uh, specific to that area, that's unique to the area. The mixed-use zoning is something, uh, we felt could be used in other areas of the city, so that was actually a new zoning classification that, that was implemented at the time. Um, right here is the, uh, the area that, uh, the zoning actions, uh, covered. Uh, you'll see there's a couple that, uh, perhaps where the, uh, Avenue HQ was, was an existing PUD. The, um, old, uh, Shy Rocks, uh, grocery, uh, that was not rezoned, just because of it, it's used, didn't really fit into the Capitol Avenue area. But that is the area that the zoning actions, uh... Another issue was, I, I mentioned, uh, infrastructure. Uh, the Public Works Department had, um, put together a, a plan and had it implemented and going to basically redo Capitol Avenue. And that involved many different aspects of the infrastructure. Uh, basically, they, they did a street overlay, sidewalks, new crosswalks, you see sort of the decorative crosswalk there, ADA improvements. Um, there's another shot of the sidewalks. You can kind of see the, uh, before that blue house, that was one of those where the property owner was responsible and addressed the issues, and you can kind of see, um, over on the right side, it, it's now painted white, but they addressed the issues that were brought up before them. Also, uh, Public Works did some stormwater improvements. You see new vegetation there, uh, those, uh, trees that have the sweet gums, the ones that trip you when you walk up there, those are gone. Um, they also included some, uh, transit improvements, bike racks, things like that in the area. Time, uh, better slow down. They also, something really neat is they did, uh, while they had all that work going on, they improved the electrical improvements that could create more of a festival opportunity. Uh, they've had Ford Fest up there, uh, other opportunities, but with all that electric, such as downtown on High Street, i- it allows more activities in the future be done relatively easily. Then the tornado came. The properties in orange were ones that were destroyed in this area. Um, and I did fail to mention, one of them through the, uh, 608 State Street was one that the property owner actually voluntarily gave to the Housing Authority that became any of their reading activities. And let's see. Phase two acquisitions occurred. Uh, you can see most of those occurred on the, uh, the other part of the 100... South half of the 100 block of Jackson, basically, uh, 500 block down to, it's 513, and then Ivy Terrace property, which is on the south side of that. Uh, that was the second phase of acquisitions. And, and what they've been doing, or what they were doing a- as they did this, is they would put together, um, they would solicit individuals or companies for redevelopment activities on these properties and work with them and see what they would do to, uh, to fix them up. Some tax incentives involved with that. Uh, I wasn't really involved in the nitty-gritty of the, the deals that the Housing Authority made with the developers. The third phase, uh, there in that bright green there, um, finished up, uh, a lot of the, uh, problem properties on the 500 block, and also, uh, they're acquiring three properties on the 400 block. Uh, I believe there was a, uh, court rule that, that they can acquire them, and they're going through the appraisal process more than just the paperwork process to actually take title of those properties.
We, we expect the Commissioner's word imminently. Yep. So we should know the final, final amounts, hopefully this week.
Also, as part of what's been going on up there, that bright orange, the city has had to demolish, uh, a few more buildings, uh, most of those recently, uh, at 528 Capitol, 519, if you remember, that was one that was actually falling, it had a, it was already in very bad condition, and the tornado did more damage and dropped a tree on it. Uh, 417 was, uh, basically imploding on itself, the walls expanding and the sinking down. Um, so those are some of the properties that the city has actually had to demolish. To my final slide that has every... Also, in this process, uh, those triangles, the, the yellow triangles, are properties that are identified as dangerous buildings. I believe there's about 17 of them. We have, uh, nine hearings scheduled for next week, and most of them are, are, are put in this, uh, graphic here. And then this is what I was trying to lead up to. Uh, this is where we are. Um, in this area, those properties that are in that blue shade are what we're referring to as occupied, may not be occupied literally by somebody, but they're able to be occupied. They're not in a danger status or anything like... Um, you still see the, uh, uh, yellow triangles, those are the, uh, buildings that are dangerous and have gone through or about ready to complete the hearing process. Um, the LCRA, the Housing Authority, uh, those properties, uh, although they're outlined in red up there, it's kind of hard to see, but they're the ones I've been showing you in green. Fifteen of those have been acquired. Four of those were vacant lots. Uh, 11 were lots with buildings. Some of the lots had more than one building. Uh, one structure was demolished by their private developer. They worked with a developer who was trying to re-bring it back, and it actually had to be demolished, it was beyond, uh, bringing back to life. Um, and then, uh, five of the, uh, structures are currently under renovation, uh, and, and two are occupied and three are dangerous. Those are just the 15 that have been acquired by the LCRA. So not necessarily trying to say how the LCRA is doing, but that's sort of a summary of the 15 lots that they've acquired and, and what's happened to them. Uh, there are, excuse me, I guess 18 dangerous buildings here. Uh, 17 of them are not occupied, one is occupied, uh, not here to the, uh, area, so we have a hearing scheduled next week. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions about where we are or go back in the slides, but, uh, kind of burn through that quickly, but...
Thank you, Mr. Sanders, for that update. Do we have any questions, council? It's hard to believe when you look at that and think from 2016, when we started, and of course, we never anticipated a tornado, uh, throwing a wrench in it as well, but a lot of progress has been made. It's, um, it just has been slow-going because a lot of those didn't even start. I mean, just the whole legal process is what started in 2016, not really the renovation of any of that, so considering...
Actually, if I may, I, I think this goes back to, uh, 2014, the council passed a resolution, uh, reinforcing their, uh, support of code enforcement and property inspections and things like that. And then that probably initiated staff to start working the Housing Authority, kind of this process together. My predecessor, she did that, and her most tasks got accomplished at that time, so...
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Councilman Schreiber?
Yes, uh, Mr. Sanders, on the revitalization, one of the first slides you put up indicated that, um, properties could be renovated and then to hold up to four families. Now, does that include the properties on Jackson Street as well, or is that just Capitol Avenue?
Talking about 126 Jackson Street, the, uh, sort of the, the multifamily, I think...
I'm talking about 101 specifically.
101. That, I believe, was originally developed as a, as a four blocks. That would apply to that one, too, for, um, if someone is thinking of five units that may require zoning.
But basically, we would like to see it go with fours.
Four, yes, sir. And, and, but...
For that entire area.
And, and, and there are, I turned over on, excuse me, Marshall Street, 126 Marshall's was...
Now, if there's any new construction that's placed on any of the lots that are now vacant, then would that new construction have to meet, uh, certain guidelines as far as fitting into the area?
Yes.
And would that include the area like of State Street, Jackson Street, Marshall Street, that whole area contiguous to Capitol Avenue?
All those areas that were in yellow are in that district.
Okay.
And, and the way it's set up, it's sort of like a menu. If you're gonna develop, you have the choice to pick something that was already developed in the past and send it to the city, and you can say, look, this was in the area 100 years ago, it's just not here now, I'd like to rebuild it. Right? We're assuming it would have all the architectural features. But the way the overlay district is set up, um, there's sort of a menu of items that, that, that required and you can pick, so, so there's really no, um, review process except that when a building permit comes in, make sure your glass requirements, your front porch and things like that are met. Not, we'll, we'll have a discussion with you to see how you can meet with the overlay district.
Now, would that be applicable, say, if, um, if it was a property that the Housing Authority owned, and would they, those same guidelines have to be followed for redevelopment, or could just anything be placed there?
Uh, in terms of, if the Housing Authority owns it, I'm gonna defer that to Ryan, because I'm not sure if they're...
State law requires Housing Authority projects to comply with city code.
Very good. Okay. That's what I want to know. Thank you.
Mr. Mollman?
Yeah, so I have some financial information to go along with that. So, um, over the course of the project, the city thus far has paid, reimbursed to the Housing Authority under the reimbursement agreement, which was passed back in 2017, total of $309,357.65. Um, we're expecting about another $75,000, um, in reimbursements due for 101 East Jackson once that, uh, once that, uh, transaction is finalized. Uh, that's a transformational, uh, housing project. And then, uh, the current phase three project, we're, we're estimating, this is probably on the high end, uh, estimating additional, uh, additional $75,000 under the reimbursement agreement. Um, so just rough math, um, is $460,000, uh, roughly. That, that, that averages to about $30,000 per property that the Housing Authority has required. Everyone can have their own opinion on this, but if you told me back in 2017 that we were gonna do this for $30,000 per property, I, I would say that would be a rousing success, at least in my book. So just a little bit of, uh, of the financial history to go along with what Sunny presented.
If I may, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but I know the abatements, or property abatements have... Hands of the previous owner, so that's a benefit, too.
Absolutely. Councilman Fitzwater?
Yeah, I have questions, and I'd ask you kind of off the record, but just to discuss, we had put a large sum of money aside to help with some of the demolitions. I know you're working on it, but if we need some additional funds, will, will those, will that number be available in the future?
Yes, yes, um, and, and to note that most of that money has been spent, I believe, I'm gonna say $50,000, $60,000 left with, which we're holding on to, because 108 Jackson, we're going through the process to use, uh, NSP money that was tied up in 408 Lafayette, about to the point to be a trigger after getting all the paperwork done, to do that demolition with that $78,000, but we don't know if demolition's gonna cost more, um, just due to the size of it and nature of the property. So we're waiting to see how much that demolition will cost, apply all the federal money into it, if we have to put some more money into it, and have whatever the remainder is to address any more questions. But, uh, I can get you those numbers very quickly.
But I think the council was wise. When we put the money in there, I mean, that was our best guess at that time. Kind of like ripping off a bandage. I mean, we can just get that piece of it taken care of as we get the ability, then we can figure out where we go, go from here. My second question is, as you, as I talked to developers in that area, some of their hesitation is some of the requirements, I guess, Councilman Schreiber's question, and that, the, some of the plan goes back five years. What would be the process if we wanted to re-look at what the requirements, what that menu looks like in CFN 2022 Marketplace? If it makes sense, and I realize there's a lot of factors that come to play on that, but what would be the process to at least open those discussions and have people that actually have to develop those properties and can give us advice on how much you could, what it would cost to be able to develop to our standards versus if we looked at relaxing or changing in some area?
The, the short answer, I, I think one thing you're asking is, uh, like Ivy Terrace, their use was gonna be different than what was in, in the mixed-use zoning that I talked about. They went through and got a, a planning and development, a PUD, so rezoning. So i- if it turns out that there's an area there where it doesn't make sense, and of course, there'd be a public involvement process, zoning activity, and come to the council, uh, perhaps the, uh, the end use of part of that area is not to be like the rest of the area, right? Perhaps it's a transition from downtown. It's a different type of housing, uh, but that is something that, that we would go through a process to determine. Certainly, if anybody owns any of those properties, they can go through a PUD process right today. So they acquired a couple of properties and they're planning to do something a little bit elaborate that wasn't, uh, able to do in the overlay district and the mixed-use zoning. Yeah, I'm not sure I answered everything. Okay.
Any other questions? We sure appreciate that update on that, uh, important topic. Thank you. So, uh, any other new business? Councilman Spencer?
Yes, I was just wondering, with, since, uh, Mr. Spaulings here this evening, can we get an update on the Deborah Cooper Park? How that's going? can we get an update on the Deborah Cooper Park? How that's going?
We are due to put in a shelter, benches. Got word the other day, a lot of these materials back in September. Typical three-month lead time. Got word back that the shelter is not scheduled to be in now until June fifteenth, so we're preparing. We'll have the equipment in four restrooms, so we'll be able to get started on this couple of weeks, I hope. Benches and sort of things will go in sometime early March.
Just a follow-up as well. Are, is the railroad still requiring a flagman? So that process is.
Okay, with that, item nineteen, to go into closed session pursuant to Section six one oh point oh two one of the revised statutes of Missouri, the chair will entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss the following: Attorney-client Privilege Communications, Section six one oh point oh two one one, and Real Estate, Section six one oh point oh two one two. Is there a motion to approve?
They're moved.
Roll call. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Lester.
Aye.
Schreiber. Spencer.
Aye.
Spicer.
Aye.
Boat.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Kimna.
Aye.
Motion passes, so we'll.